Buenas tardes a todos. Quiero bienvenidos a la mesa directiva. Para esta junta directiva especial. Tienen la oportunidad. Vienen a tener la oportunidad de hablar para comentarios públicos. Tienen dos minutos para poder ayudar presentemente en la mesa directiva. Y en temas de no agendados. Tienen también la oportunidad. Si están por vía Zoom, van a tener la oportunidad para hablar en la presencia. Si están por teléfono. También tenemos y ofrecemos comentarios públicos para los temas agendados. Para la discusión. Dado al acto Brown, se van a hacer para responder temas en la agenda. Ahora vamos a mover a comentarios públicos. Ahora para los temas. Reconocemos que estamos en las tierras los chingó Mueca, que son los primeros habitantes. Puedes tomar la lista, por favor. Trust Smith Bowles. Buenas tardes, presente. Trust Reckler, presente. Trust Christian, presente. Trust Phillips, ausente. Trust Simon Sher, ausente. Trust Yallop, presente. Gracias a todos. Muchísimas gracias. Ahora podemos mover a revisión de la agenda, por favor. Si las personas para aprobar la agenda. Adoptada, gracias.
It's unfortunate.
If we could double check. Can you, they can hear us now. I'm sorry to do this, but I think that we need to restart.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bear with us for a moment. Bear with us first. I'm trying to get the presentation back up. Here you go. But how do I get it back to the top? You want to go back to the beginning?
Yes, please. Yeah, let's just restart the whole thing.
All right. Good evening. Sorry for those folks on Zoom that didn't catch the first part of the meeting. So we're going to recap for you. Tonight, first, I'd like to thank, thank our architects and our community and our steering committee for being a part of this process to bring Kennedy Richmond and Stige before you this evening. Tonight's agenda, we're going to discuss the proposed measure our implementation plan. We're going to talk about state and measure our revenues. We're going to talk about the Kennedy Richmond High modernization process that we went through to bring it here tonight, and we're going to talk about the next steps for Stige. We have our architects here tonight that will give us an overview of Kennedy and Richmond projects as well as we discussion the overall budget. Just to give a recap of current budgets where we are today, Major R is a $575 million bond. Currently, we have allocated $8.6 million of that bond and the breakout of that allocation is $6.6 million that went to the recent reconstruction of the Kennedy Fields. And we've allocated $1 million both for Kennedy and Richmond High for the design process we're going through this evening, which brings the balance to 566.4 million dollars available within Major R. Our state revenue is dollars that have come in for modernization projects. They're grants from the state and over the years we've used these funds to fund our modernization projects. Today, we've received over $227 million and as recently as November 22, we've received $5.6 million. These dollars have been used to bridge the gap between our 2016 master plan. Originally, we were had a shortfall and as the dollars have come in from the state, these dollars are rolled in to fund those particular projects. In the current time, at the present time, we have $43.3 million available within that fund. I'd like to introduce Miss Mejia Hooper, who's going to take over this portion of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Ellen Mejia Hooper. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. And this process has been a long time in the making. We began with the site selection that started with the board prioritizing Kendi, Richmond, and Stige for measure our dollars. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Kendi, Richmond, and Stige faculty, staff, community, and families who participated in the process and have gave time and input into the process. We really appreciate it, especially the school sites that have helped coordinate events at their schools. Past the site selection, the facility master plan, planning began for both the Kendi and Richmond sites. We had architectural teams that created a big picture direction for both sites. However, those master plans were beyond the available funding within measure R. Understanding that we needed to stay within that funding, we went forward with the process that began in May, which was the architectural project scoping. We springboarded off of the original master plan ideas, assessments, and brought those forward to be again this prioritization process. And we understand that it is a prioritization process and we did hear that there was much input about additional items that really wanted to be within these plans. However, the plans that you will see tonight and before you are really a representation of something that can be truly transformative for all of these campuses. The after this process, which we're hoping concludes with the allocation of funding and the selection of scope for Richmond and Kennedy and the allocation of funding for Stige, we would like to move on to the architectural design process, which will really move us into formal architecture and construction. Throughout the process, we have been supporting these teams with the community outreach. I'd also like to thank the communications folks who have supported that process and created or gave us access to different software that that issued out newsletters and flyers. We've had over 5,000 views that went to all of the feeder patterns. And the architectural scoping really moved forward with different options that was evaluated through orientation days, back to school nights, student tabling, formal community meetings, steering committee meetings, all giving us input into this process. And each architectural team will go through in a bit more detail about the specifics for each of the schools. We also had project parameters that were set forward by the facilities department to ensure that both school sites moved forward in similar manners. One of the items we dictated was the minimum modernization standards to make sure that any building that is planning to be remaining onsite after the completion of the modernization project will be touched and will have at least new voltage system, new below voltage system accessibility improvements and interior and exterior finishes. As well as the the buildings that need roof and HVAC replacement. And so that is part of the plan for any building to stay. We looked at the schedule and dictated that both projects should move concurrently and that the original phase one should move before the completion of the design of phase two and three to be able to optimize the amount of time it will take for us to get students into new facilities. We also said that the completion date should be no later than 2030. The budget was also a point of discussion and between our various cost estimators, each group has a professional cost estimator on their team. We had a joint discussion between them to ensure that everyone was using standardized estimating assumptions so that we had parity between the estimating as well as setting the hard construction cost originally at 175, but after evaluation of our soft costs, we expanded that to 185 for the hard construction cost. You'll notice that later in the presentation, we'll have another number, but that's really the project budget. So overall, as Mr. Freeze presented, Measure R had 575 as our original number, left with 566 million, point four million. And our proposed budget allocation is to split the funding between Kennedy and Richmond with 279.1 million each and reserving 8.2 for central costs, which are really the costs that support the bond projects in total for both projects through June 30, 2030. So how that looks overall is we had the original planning budget of 1 million for each one of the schools. We're adding that to 279.1 million to both of them, which would give us 280.1 million overall for Kennedy and Richmond. And and that will be a a budget or an action item that will occur after you see the architectural presentations. We didn't want to bring forward the action items for the budget before you were able to see the scopes. Moving on to Stige. Stige was a little bit of a different animal, but it was prioritized by the board to be part of the measure our discussion. But it also had a critical needs project that was established in 2016 with that facility master plan for 2.9 million dollars. We were going to remove one building on that campus and utilize the existing portables on campus to help support that school program. Obviously, there is much more need at Stige beyond that piece. And so we enlisted the help of QKA architects and they went through a scoping project similar but at a smaller scale than what we did at Kennedy and Richmond. We met with the school side a couple times, once back before school got out in the spring, twice since we've been in in school this fall to review different options. You can see two snapshots of options there. However, with that process, we've learned that 28 million would be the absolute minimum that we could do if we maintained the same level of modernization that we put forward for the high schools for buildings to remain and utilized either portable or modular construction to build out the portions of the campus to replace the demolished building. Overall, in evaluating the state funding, we are looking at a next steps of allocating the budget and being able to set forward a benchmark that we are able to build around with formal options with community and come back to you after we have a viable options for a recommendation of scope on this project. Returning to the revenue, we have the state revenue of 33.3 million. And as as Mr. Free said, we received most of that or 15.6 million of that within the last year. In evaluating that a potential funding, we are recommending tonight to move forward with augmenting the original 2.9 million from the bond funds to with 40.1 million of the state revenue to bring Stige's budget to 43 million. And again, that will be brought forward in the action items tonight. So just as a summary, the three action items we will be asking for after the presentation by both the Kendi and Richmond architects will be to have a budget allocation adjustment and increase the budgets of the Kendi, Richmond, and Stige projects to the amounts shown in the budget allocation column.
Thank you so much. Public. Now we're going to move to public comments section. So if you're on Zoom, this is the time where you want to raise your hand. I understand Zoom folks, you are not able to hear the announcement earlier. So this is the public comment section. So why don't we get started with our public comment? If we could put up our clock and maybe we can start with here at the John while people on Zoom put up their their hands.
Our first public comment is Gretchen Board, hosted.
And if you could please press the button that has a little person as a sticker. Thank you so much.
I was requesting to speak about Richmond High. I came before the agenda, so I wrote Richmond High.
That's fine. We're doing them all together now. Yeah.
Oh.
We're doing all public comment together now. So you can make public comment on Richmond High. It's fine.
All right. Okay. Well, I'm a teacher at Richmond High and I've taught for this school district 20 years. I've been at Richmond High seven. And in the seven years I've been there, I think there's been at least 12 evacuations due to electrical fires, gas smells, loss of power. It's a real safety concern of mine. As you know, we don't have any windows, so when there's no power, we cannot see and everything is done on computers. Because of the way Richmond High was designed, there's not real walls because it was that pod design. So only two walls in most rooms have outlets, maybe two outlets on each wall. So that's four outlets, but now kids have computers they plug in, phones. We're using extension cords and surge protectors. So the problem is being compounded. We really need a new facility. Thank you for consideration.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So tonight I'm going to borrow from Dr. Kings. I Have a Dream speech. A part of his famous quote about insufficient funds. This district for over 20 years has defaulted.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gash, if you could just pause for a minute. Can people in the back hear the public comment? No. Mike? Ms. Gash, one second, please. Thank you. We'll restart your time. Don't worry.
Okay.
Ms. Gash, you can start now. Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Okay, so tonight I'm going to borrow from Dr. Kings. I Have a Dream speech. A part of his famous quote about insufficient funds. The district for over 20 years has defaulted on its promissory note of equity to Kennedy High School. I want to continue to lift up our students who continue to endure and persevere through this continued inequity daily. I want to uplift our staff who bring light into a physical environment with limited actual light. I want to say thank you that we have a complete admin staff as of last week. Welcome, Miss C. And finally, district, please continue to provide my principal, Ms. McGee, with all the needed resources for her success. Therefore, Kennedy's students' success. And also just remember, this is all about the kids. And granted, we know in our students and we have communicated to them that they are making decisions for a generation of students who they will benefit from it, but not the students right now. But even right now, as we're going to go through this transition, please remember, how do we help our kids in this time of being in portables and the movement? How do we help staff in this transition from going from a classroom to actual to portable? So even though we're talking about, you know, this modernization and this rebuild, but also remember there are also people who are walking within the parameters of Kennedy High School and that we're going to need this continuing and ongoing support. So thank you for your time, everybody. Have a wonderful blessed night.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Clear. Oh, of course. And this is our principal. This is Ruiz. This is my seventh year working at Siege Elementary. I am here today to not only promote Stige, but also emphasize the importance of the Williams complaint process and support other schools in need. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all the current care for Stige. Yesterday, I told a student about our meeting today. They looked up Stige news articles during their free time and started a research project on the school. On their own, they compared their experiences at the school with the complaints described online. They also felt inspired by the community's activism and couldn't wait to share their ideas with you. We need to continue lighting the students' fire for activism. On the same note, we also need to support community voices by respecting the Williams complaint process. Even if our needs get met at Stige, even if we address the mold that causes our community to become sick, even if we can open our windows again and see a green field outside, and even if district leadership answers all of our problems, we must respect all schools in our community as well. Community members feel inspired by the Williams complaint process. More individuals are becoming experts in filing Williams complaints. We need to support the process, answer our communities, and fight for all the schools in need. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Daisy Chacon.
Hi. First, I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Daisy Chacon. I'm a Richmond High alumni. I'm currently a RISE staff member and I'm a community member. I've also been very fortunate to be a huge part of the process as part of the committee that's been planning the redesign process for Richmond High. I do want to start off just by thanking all of the architects and the community that's come together to really truly make this a human, a humanizing process for everyone involved. As a RISE staff member for the past five and a half years and as an alumni, I've had the opportunity to work and talk with youth from both Kennedy and Richmond High schools and really discuss the needs of the youth. And the first thing that they mentioned is facilities. Youth are feeling like they're trapped in dark brick buildings with no windows. That is the first thing all of them name. They've compared their schools to prisons. They feel unsafe. They feel unwanted. They feel gated and trapped. And so opening it up for them to truly being able to share what it is that they need and open space where they feel safe, where they feel supported is so important and I'm just really thankful for this process and I really hope to see it follow through. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Zalon Harrison.
I'm sorry. I'll wait to speak when it's my turn because I was going to speak, but I'll wait. Thank you. Sorry.
It is your turn, Ms. Harris.
No, I'm going to be speaking on the.
This is the only time for public comment. You can speak on all the items, on any item that you may have.
She is actually part of the Richmond presentation.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry that I filled out a.
Got it. No, no problem. Thank you so much. We can go to the next one.
Our next public comment is Christina Huerta. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Christina Huerta. And I'm a proud Kennedy teacher. I have been at Kennedy for ten years now and in those ten years, uh, we have heard so many rumors and ideas and possibilities about what Kennedy could be. And unfortunately, none of that has really come to existence. Uh, when Mesher R passed and we got a team of architects to come to on campus and collect student feedback, they came to my advisory and even though my advisory is mainly newcomers and there was a language barrier, my students engaged and really presented a beautiful dream about what Kennedy could be so that students could actually feel safe and uh, welcome in a campus that really met their needs. And they did this knowing that they would not be able to benefit from this particular campus once it actually came to fruition. When that all ended and we had to somewhat restart with a brand new team, a lot of our students and staff lost hope that it was ever going to happen. So I urge the board to look at this plan, to look at what is being presented today and to grant Kennedy the campus that it deserves. We need a new facility. Our classrooms don't have windows. Uh, like the Richmond High teacher mentioned, most of the um, electrical outlets are only in two walls of the classroom. We don't have the appropriate access for our students to feel safe in these um, campuses. They are in overcrowded hallways. They're in overcrowded classrooms. Um, and we really have done a disservice by not providing them with the best campus. So please listen to the presentation, approve it, and let's get Kennedy High students and its community the campus that it deserves. Thank you.
Next public comment is Andrew Wilkie.
Sorry, you gotta press it again.
Hello. Oh, nice. My name's Andrew Wilkie. Um, I've been at Richmond High School for ten years. I went to Pinot Valley. Um, I've taught at nine different schools in this district. Um, I'm gonna be speaking again with our group, but since I'm up here, just wanna, we should frame this conversation and we should frame it in the frame of this community. So we could go, we could go drive by Pinot Valley right now. It's beautiful, right? You go drive by Deansa where I live. It's beautiful. Then when the sun sets, you could go drive by Richmond High School. And then you could go drive by Kennedy. This is the existence our children live in. It's much different. Pinot Valley has millions of dollars of excess things built into that school that they don't use. They got a media center that must have cost two million dollars. There's no media class or teacher. The kids at Richmond hire an old crusty old closet doing their media classes daily. So this should be the scope that I hope this is all pers- for in your minds from is that our two schools and our kids have a very different life experience. I grew up out in that Pinot Valley. It's beautiful. I know my kids, I've had to drive to their homes during COVID to drop things off. While I grew up in a beautiful house because my family's been here a long time. You got kids living in illegally subdivided garages, trailers, and then they come to facilities that inhibit their ability to learn. We got kids been here a year in this country. And they're in third world conditions trying to get an education so they can make a living and support God knows how many family members. So that should be the scope that we think about this stuff in. Um, these kids, it's, 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 go to great schools, look up the numbers, look at the number of humans served, look at the percentages of low income, students of color. It's, it's, it's pretty clear. So thank you guys. I'll talk more a bit.
Our next public comment is Don Gosney. Please unmute yourself.
He, he's here in person. Mr. Gosney, if you could press the little button. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, it was easier to hit the, the raise hand button over there where I can actually hear. You may have heard me talk about the audio in here. I can hear it better on, on Zoom than I can in person here. First off, great displays here. I'm, I'm just wondering if they might be better served if instead of thirty-five feet away from the people in the audience, maybe if you moved them about twenty feet closer so they could actually see them and look at the details while they're having discussions. Second thing is, I'm a proud Kennedy High alum. So I started there fifty-five years ago. Back then, Mr. Perris. We looked at him like he was an old man. So what does that make him right now? Is that really old man? I said, but he is Mr. Mr. Kennedy. Okay, uh, but lastly, if you really want to hear what the people have to think about or say about these uh, proposals, don't ask for comments before you actually tell them what the proposal is. Have comment after the proposal so we can actually comment on the substance of the issues. What we're doing right now is giving you wish lists. That's not really being responsible, community leaders and elected officials. You know, just for something for consideration, if and when we ever let you have a meeting like this again. Thanks a lot.
Our next public comment is Ben Benjamin Carpenter.
I will. Okay, so, oh, button's pushed. All right. So members of the board, hello. Uh, if I haven't met you, I'm Ben Carpenter, the welding teacher at Kennedy. I'd like to read you some facts. I've also emailed this to you so you can see the source of the facts from the American Welding Society. Around a four hundred thousand person labor shortage today projected through twenty twenty-seven. Uh, ninety thousand annual jobs in the U.S. to be filled between now and then. A hundred and fifty thousand current welders approaching retirement. Annual uh, annual median wage for the country is fifty-five thousand, but this is California. This is Jeffrey. This is Ignacio, my two first graduates from the welding pathway. And Monica was one of my first students, who is now my bilingual aide, which was invaluable to the pathway. I have three industry partners in Richmond that have offered these guys jobs around thirty-one an hour. That's ten thousand dollars above the median wage, starting salary with little experience. There's a huge need for skilled trades, not just in welding, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking at two plans for the Kennedy rebuild. One plan gives us just about everything we need. The other plan actually, it gives us some things that we want, but it detracts a bit from what we need. What I mean is that in option two, CTE, FAPA, art, all grouped in the same wing of the campus, everything's together, there's a flow, it's natural, it makes perfect sense. Uh, in option one, there is a theater, which in my opinion makes little practical sense. If we're going to work within a limited timeframe and a finite budget, I don't think that it makes any sense to spread that budget around on things that don't practically serve us. The need for CTE and skilled trades is enormous right now. It will be for the next ten, maybe twenty years, and we need to jump on this opportunity right now. When was the last time Kennedy was the best at something?
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it.
We can be.
Your next public comment is Ian Bader. Bader?
Hi, Ian here. Um, uh, let's see, I, um, I, first of all, I want to start out by saying that I, I support uh, wholeheartedly the rebuilding of part of Kennedy. And I want to especially shout out to um, Mr. Freeze and Ms. Mejia Hooper, who did a great job. Um, I got to know Ellen really well over the last year or so, uh, coming and going at Kennedy. So um, the second half of my comments are not meant to be critical of them at all. Um, I'm excited to see Kennedy, or at least part of Kennedy rebuilt. Um, it is long, long overdue and of course, our students totally deserve it. However, I'm extremely uh, conflicted and skeptical and critical of this entire process. Uh, this is, uh, this is my nineteenth year at Kennedy and this is my third, third rebuilding event. So, you know, you can, you can go ahead and I digest that. Um, originally, we were supposed to get a whole new school, like all the other high schools. And now we're getting a partial rebuild and we were put in a position of choosing one thing over another, choosing your CTE program over a second gym. And it was really a Sophie's choice and it was not a comfortable feeling in these meetings. Uh, our students, our community deserve so much more. And I'm gonna name something that's been in the background of very, of many, many of the comments today, which is this is a textbook definition example of institutional racism. And in my opinion, if it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's definitely a duck. So I just want you all to kind of reckon with that. I understand that you ran out of money, but once upon a time, there was enough money and it just seems interesting that both Richmond schools are getting shortchanged in this entire process. So I am in support of this, but I'm all.
Our next public comment is Mitzi Perez Karo.
Hello, uh, my name is Mitzi Perez Karo. I teach at Kennedy High. This is my seventh year teaching. Um, and I want to pinpoint some things on the presentation that you all are gonna give later. Um, so a lot of the people who commented on the survey uh, said that physical safety or security, more learning opportunities and a variety of spaces for them, mental health and wellbeing are some of the most important things for them. Along with more learning opportunities and variety of spaces for them, physical safety or security, indoor comfort and views, physical health and wellbeing, mental health and wellbeing and student recognition. Um, I want you to keep that in mind as we move forward in this process. And I also want to remind you of a couple of things, um, that is on the California dashboard. Um, so in comparison to other schools that Richmond students attend, uh, there is Deansa with fifty-eight point one percent socio-economically disadvantaged. El Cerrito with thirty-six point nine percent socio-economically disadvantaged. Richmond High, um, with seventy-two point five percent socially econ- economically disadvantaged and Kennedy with seventy-four point five percent socially economically disadvantaged. Um, so echoing a lot with, about what Mr. Bader said, you need to be very careful about how you're approaching this project and how you're including our students, our staff, our faculty and the community. We need more of our people involved in this process and I would highly recommend that you um, talk to all of the advisories at Kennedy, at Richmond High, et cetera. Um, I also want to remind you that I teach uh, web design and a lot of our students are actually working on this and every single year, some of the students pick Kennedy as something that they want to redesign.
Our next public comment is Luis Chacon. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening all. Uh, my name is Luis Chacon. I'm speaking this evening as a Richmond High Assistant Principal, former Richmond High teacher, Richmond High alum and father of future Richmond High students. Um, I really want to uplift what the last two speakers said. Um, I think it really highlights a need that has existed in our community, um, of Richmond High, Kennedy High and Stige for a long time. Um, I do want to acknowledge also the architecture and redesign team for putting together a proposal that has taken into account uh, community voice, student voice, staff and family voice. And I look forward to all of those key ho- um, stakeholders continuing to take part in the process. It has been a very rewarding experience participating in that process. I do feel confident that the design that they produce is reflective of what the community wants and needs and what the community um, really is able to receive at this point. Um, just because as the last two speakers mentioned, we haven't received what we rightfully should in the past. Um, I do want to acknowledge that as a Richmond High student, I do remember having a Dodge ceiling tiles falling on my head. Um, as a teacher, just having to deal with ongoing electrical and various facility limitations that led to a lot of interruptions in our classes. Now, as an admin- and as an administrator, working to resolve and really work around those facility limitations and deficiencies to make sure that we have a strong learning environment for our students. Our students and staff deserve to spend their school day in a facility that sets them up to succeed. And I look, I really look forward to our school board and community fulfilling their responsibility to our students for a revamped and safer structural environment. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Nicole Ruiz.
Um, good evening. My name is Nicole Ruiz and I'm the very proud principal at Stige Elementary. This is my seventh year at Stige and my eighteenth year in West Contra Costa. Stige is the oldest elementary school, actually the oldest school, but the oldest elementary school in our district and is very much in disrepair. In addition to the building itself, the original windows remain in much of the school and many of our classrooms, temperatures increased to ninety degrees and above when it's hot. A lot of the windows don't open. We've had consistent issues with plumbing as well as mold. Many of our fences surrounding the school are three feet or less and can be easily jumped by strangers. Yet our students show up each day and teachers choose to work at Stige. So I'd like to ask the board to improve the Increase to Stige Critical Needs Project Budget. Thank you.
And our last public comment is Sam Starbuck Neff. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sam Starbuck Neff. I am the coach of, the second coach of the Richmond High Robotics Team, uh, an award-winning uh, robotics program run out of Richmond High School. Fundamentally, we need to approve this work. It is embarrassing the level of disrepair of the facilities involved. And as a fundamental, basic level of supporting our students, we need to approve and move forward with the minimum modernization as outlined in these proposals. Now, the way that we've gotten here is deeply, deeply frustrating because somehow we ran out of money before we got to the schools that serve our most disadvantaged community members. And that is predictable and also frustrating and makes me wonder how we can improve this for the next round of bond funding and what we're going to be able to do to keep options open on these campuses for additional improvements after this round. Because that way we will be able to serve the serve and expand the, a level of and bring equity to these students that is not in what we are approving today. We're, we've been presented with basically two options of keeping about sixty or seventy percent of the campus and redoing the interiors on that section. And then there's some changes around the outside of like, oh, should we have some changes to the gym or should we have an additional, um, an additional uh, section of uh, class of um, music and law. Um, the last equity point is that right now we are going to slam the engineering academy into the old section of campus in both of the plans. Um, with an assumption that we don't need um, the same level of windows and exterior access as other programs. Um, and those are the students that are generally coming from that, that are looking for non-traditional pathways to end uh, trades-based um, careers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody who uh, came and gave public comment. Um, we're actually gonna take a five-minute recess so that uh, we can move some of the information forward to the public and here who's present. Um, so we will be back at five fifty-five. So we will be back at five fifty-five, or we're going to take five minutes. Thank you. Okay. We are now heading into the action items, which all have some presentations. So we're going to start with the approval for the design of Kennedy High School. Then we have the approval of the design for Richmond High School. Then after that, we have three items which are around the budget. The increase for Measure R for the project for Kennedy High School. Then for the Measure R project budget for Richmond High School. And lastly, we are finishing with the increase of the budget for Stige Elementary School. So what we're going to do here, Board, is that we're going to hear the presentation, then we're going to move to questions and then motions and then comments like regular, okay? Mr. Freeze, we can start with the first presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us again. Tonight, we have HKIT Architects with Jeff Evans leading the team who will be presenting Kennedy High's master plan options.
Thank you, Ellen. We're pleased to be here to present about the reimagined Kennedy High School campus. As Ellen mentioned, we are HKIT Architects. I'm here with my colleague Joey on behalf of the design team that you see on the screen. I would also like to highlight and extend that our Director of Marketing, Tisha, is a class of seventy-five graduate from Kennedy High School and whose spirit has guided our work and our collaboration with Kennedy Community.
Thank you. So we began the process to reimagine Kennedy High School by looking at the work done in the master plan. It identified site organization as a major issue at Kennedy High School. In order to help rectify this, the different options that were in the master plans had several common threads, including having the admin entry on Cutting Boulevard, having clearer paths throughout the campus and reinvigorating the green and outdoor spaces on the campus. Next slide. We also, along with teams of engineers, performed building assessments of all the existing buildings to determine their relative condition to one another and the work that is necessary to bring them up to current code and do the renovations that Ellen talked about previously. The buildings and their relative, relative condition are shown here. Those in red needing the most amount of improvements and those in green needing the least amount of improvements. Next slide. We also had the pleasure of working with the community throughout this process, including the steering committee, doing student tabling at lunchtime and visiting with the student leadership class. On the slide in front of you is an activity that we did with the groups where they had to pick what new buildings they wanted for campus and work within a budget. Next slide. Here's a breakdown of the number of community members that we talked to throughout the process, both virtually and in person. We also did two surveys throughout the process and had over three hundred respondents, the majority being students at Kennedy High School. The demographics are also shown here for that. Next slide. We looked at all of their answers in a lot of detail, but to summarize them for you this evening, we heard a lot of the same concerns over and over. The Kennedy community wants a school that is safe, both from a security standpoint and to provide a safe space for their students to thrive and be themselves. They want more hands-on learning spaces. They want a healthy campus. That includes daylighting, more food options, and they want an inspirational educational environment. Next slide. Throughout this process, we identified four common themes that all of the projects on campus should aim to do. They should provide a safe and secure campus. They should promote health and wellness. They should be inspirational and well-built and provide a supportive learning environment for students. Next. Finally, when asked specifically about what new spaces they wanted or needed on campus, CTE pathways was the most popular choice to improve the amount of space and increase it. And then for new building choices, the most popular was a new multipurpose followed by a new theater. And all of this engagement as, as well as these final results really led to the options that we are presenting here tonight that Jeff will talk about.
I'm going to start with option one, which is the theater. As we begin to describe that, I'll highlight for you things that are in common between both options. As Joey mentioned, the very important goals that came out of the process. The new building along Cutting, which includes thirty-three classrooms, as well as the administration provides us a new safe and secure entry that can be controlled throughout the day. That gives us thirty-three new state-of-the-art classrooms and learning environments that have windows. Can I say again? Have windows. So we can improve the health and wellness of all those students and staff at the building. In addition, in the phase two, and again, this is things that are in common to both. We preserve the three hundred and four hundred building and fix those up. And then we preserve the gym and fix that up. And then again, what's in common to both in the back, we remove the portables once we're done with construction and we restore the fields and courts to the Kennedy High School campus, as well as creating an additional practice field. Now to highlight things that are specific to option one, as you can see, it's named the theater option. And so this builds a new performing arts center or theater along Cutting Boulevard there. The five hundred building stays and in that five hundred building is a clinic. And so we build a new entrance into the clinic on the south side of that building. That building retains some of the CTE programs that are there now. The six hundred building, what happens on the six hundred building is common to both schemes. And the six hundred building, we're able to expand the footprint of the welding program as well as the construction trades program and the Kennedy Inc. program. And this option, eight hundred building, which is the cafeteria, remains and it gets fixed up and has an expanded kitchen. If we go to the next slide, gives you a little bit of summary of the level of work at each campus with blue being the new construction, pink being what we call renovation, which is a reconfiguration of space. The middle tier there being major modernization, which is to improve finishes in addition to the minimum work. And then minor modernization, which is some of the things that Ellen mentioned are in common that will be done on all existing buildings, things like HAC and roofing and fire alarm. Next slide. You can see the approach to phasing with, starting with the new construction, the removal of the hundred, two hundred building and doing that new building out front. And then from there, we pivot to the renovation of existing. And then last but not least, we restore the fields and courts. The option two, it has the cafeteria. And what this includes is again, that replacement hundred, two hundred, replacement on Cutting. But what we're able to do then is also locate the math programs. And you can see on the right side of your image at the end of that building. And so they're adjacent to the science and that the two buildings from purple would then contain all of the CTE programs. We take the, what is now the cafeteria and we renovate it and bring our health sciences, so as our IT and our fab lab spaces into that, and we create a steam courtyard that also has parking adjacent for visitors. On the opposite end of the campus, we do remove the five hundred building and we make a new space for the clinic that's in this new building. That gives the clinic direct access from the parking lot and again, a safe, secure entry for those that are going to the clinic and that's separate from the campus. Just as important, we remove the five hundred building and create a new cafeteria. This, we've affectionately named to be a combination of a cafeteria and a theater, performing arts center auditorium. And so we have a space, if we could, thank you for the next slide, that would include a proper stage as well as proper acoustic sound lighting systems and can have fixed seating. And then that stage space can be secured separate from the rest of the cafeteria. That cafeteria space can then have eating during the day. And then we have a seating system, you can see on the two images on left, that can fold out and have chairs that are built into that seating system. And again, that chair stack can be secured from the cafeteria during the day and the stage can be secured from the cafeteria during the day. And so we have the ability to have a multi-functional space. We see here the level of scope and again, the blues highlighting the new construction. Again, with that new cafeteria, one of the other amenities that is really great about that scheme and that came up in the process is we're locating the cafeteria and the eating space on the K, which is the main quad. And so we get better zoning of the campus in that way. And we see the phasing, which is similar, where phase one is a new construction, then we do renovation, then we do fields in phase three. We see here a very tiny list, which hopefully everybody can make out. Won't try to read all of it to you, but I think the things that have come up in speaker comments and that we've mentioned is first and foremost, that the location of the cafeteria is different in the two options. We get it on the K in the option two. We get the steam area in the option two, where we bring all those programs together, the art, the science, the technology, the CTE programs. We are able to get a bit larger seating capacity in option two, which is the cafeteria. The health clinic in option two is new and we're able to have its own direct entry adjacent to the admin space. The CTE enhancements are similar in the six hundred. But again, the difference in option twos, we're able to bring all of those CTE programs right next to each other on the same quad in option two. Okay, next slide. In brief, I wanted to mention that we've had the pleasure of engaging with the Kennedy High School community, as well as the steering committee. And both the community and the steering committee preferred option two.
And similarly, the staff recommends option two to move forward with the Kennedy campus. This option provides a lot of benefits and addresses that original need that came up in the master planning process. I remember being in that room when the newcomers were speaking about the campus and how confusing it is and how hard it's for their families when they come to visit to understand where things are and what's going on on the campus. And the main positive of the second option is that it allows that organization to really make sense and that around the K, you would have your main gym, your performing arts space, your cafeteria and your library in a central location that could be visible from the front door and parking lot, which is currently not how Kennedy works, where all of these functions are scattered on every corner of the campus. We also have really nice outdoor yard space. I know Mr. Carpenter has passionately spoke about outdoor space as well as indoor space for the CTE programs. And that, that is another feature that, that is easily, more easily achieved in option two. So we are recommending that move forward. We do have representatives from Kennedy's campus tonight who would also like to speak about their experience in the steering committee. And so if you would come forward. Now is the time. And I know Ms. Kiki wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately she had an illness. So, but we have two lovely representatives from our steering committee.
Thank you. If you could press the button with the little person. Thank you.
Yes, Tess, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. Salutations to the school board members, our superintendent, and most importantly, to our students and all present. My name is Audra Goldie-Williams. I'm a community educator and the headship coach at El Cerrito High School. And standing next to me.
Is Mike Parrot's founding faculty from Kennedy.
He's absolutely community royalty here in WCCUST. To give history and frame the agenda item, there was a campaign to close Coronado, Niestram, Stige, Richmond High and Kennedy High School about fifteen years ago. I would come to this very room and bring my children here regularly to protest closing our home schools. Since then, Coronado was rebuilt, Niestram was rebuilt, but Stige, Richmond and Kennedy are still waiting. Now, two of my kids that I used to bring here are now at Sacramento State University. Yep, it's been that long. Tonight, I brought my grandkids. So this project began over a decade ago. It's time to bring equity to students, to the students in the community of Kennedy High School. Our students have waited far too long. As the committee, we thought it was important to hear from the staff, the students and the community. Through several meetings and surveys, we have come up with the recommendation. It was very important to me as a committee member to ensure that we waited the opinions of staff and students and elevated their wants and needs because they will be there more often and be affected the most. With that said, as a committee and the community, we recommend option number two. I ask you, if I were to ask you right now, what time is it? It's now. And if I waited two more seconds, guess what time it would be? Now. And if I waited two more seconds, what time would it be? Now. When should Kennedy receive equity? Now. So we ask that you move on behalf of Kennedy now. There may be things that are important to us that are not on the plan, like the ancillary gyms. So that all sports have the space that they need to be able to operate adequately. We want, we want, I'm sorry, I can't see. We want all to, we want all of this to, I'm sorry. We want us all to continue the work on getting them everything that other schools have so they can have equity within our district. In the meantime, Kennedy has waited long enough and we are asking that you move forward for Kennedy now. As we move forward, let's ensure that the voice of the community is elevated as high as it needs to be. Ensure that there is representation of us in every aspect of this project, even the building. We should see black and brown people all up and through this thing. This is not business. This is personal. This is not a project. It's our lives. And the effects are the vision our students will see of themselves. Thank you for your time.
That concludes our presentations.
Thank you so much for the presentations and our wonderful speakers. Board, now we're going to move to questions. We're going to do three questions each. If we need to do a second round, we'll do a second round. Does anyone want to start with questions? Does anyone have questions? No questions? Trustee Reckler, I see your hand.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for a point of order? So there'll be questions on Kennedy first and then we're going to move to.
Then we're going to do a presentation for Richmond High and then we'll do questions for Richmond High specifically. And yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't need to start, but I do have.
Go ahead. You can start.
Okay, so. Wow, that was a lot. Okay, so first I want to thank everybody for their work and their presentation and their thoughtful commentary and listening and putting all these ideas forward. So really, I know this has been a long time and I just want to say thank you. So. I'd like to start with. How? A larger question is, how did it end up that the Kennedy and the Richmond budgets were exactly the same? And then between option one and option two, do those two options cost the same? Or was one, or were they priced differently?
So to answer your question, the even split between Kennedy and Richmond High was followed from the direction of the board that they were to receive equal apportionments of the Measure R funding. So when we moved forward with the master planning process, we had given guidelines to our architectural teams that the design parameters they had would design around a hundred and seventy-five million dollar budget, which was increased later to one eighty-five. So they both had a number to work with on how they brought their schemes together. But both schemes, either optional or option two, both maximize those dollars. So both of them would, would basically take the same amount of money to build, if that answers your question.
Okay, and once again, I'm sorry, the sound in here is just absolutely awful. So they were equally divided by the will of the board and both of these options, within that, options one and two were priced about the same.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Next is. Okay, so I got that. So there's, there's, there were some comments about, from Mr. Parrot separately, about employee housing, about a second gym and about a third story. I'm wondering, is it possible to put employee housing? Is it possible to put employee housing, maybe not this round, but in general? Is it possible to put employee housing on the same campus as a school? Um, I see a space for a second gym, but I'm assuming this is a project that's off in the future if money were to. Become available and, um, are there title nine concerns with that of not having two gyms? And then the cost of building a third floor, is that more expensive or? Uh, uh, less expensive than a flat, you know, like a, a one, a ranch, if you will.
I'm sorry, I missed the very last portion of your question about the, the, the two-story or the ranch version.
I- is it more expensive or less expensive to build height? Or is it less expensive to build flat, like one, the single story?
So to, to kinda go in order from what I understand, so the question around, um. Teacher housing on the same property as the campus, that is something I'd have to research and get back to you. Um, I'm not sure if there's any preclusions to the code that would not allow that to happen. Um, as far as space would, would be, there is space in the Kennedy campus. We have limited space, but you can see from the design that there are. Opportunities that space will allow, um, if that were to be something in the future. As far as the question around two-story versus one-story, um, you get better utilization of the space that going up versus spreading out. Although the cost of construction, because you're using common things such as common corridors, those type of areas. I'm not so sure that two-story is any cheaper than single-story and they're probably relatively the same, but you have better utilization of your property.
And if I may, I, I think that Mr. Parrot's comment was around three stories. Um, and not, and not two stories, so.
So the code compliance does change when you get to a third floor. Or so it, it has the ability, depending on the scale of the building and the utilization of the exterior envelope. To become more expensive because the structural and access requirements that come with the three-story building. So one and two are different than three.
Yeah, and I would just add that the Pinole Valley High School is a three-story structure, but it came with multiple complications. As far, as far as fire code goes, smoke separation, um, it, it layers a whole nother layer of complexity to the build.
Okay, thank, thank you. And then finally, coming back to that gym, I see a space for a gym. Or a second gym, is that, that's, that's like a future wish, right?
So if you carefully read the precess, we did identify new construction for, uh, for athletics slash PE. Um, we, there are a lot of things that we don't know yet, right? We are seven to ten years out from completion. Uh, as we've all experienced recently, the economy can affect the cost of construction much more. Sometimes than what we do with scope and schedule. Uh, we are going to continue to look for opportunities that the field house might be able to be transformed into an auxiliary gym. But there are too many variables at this moment in time for us to be able to promise that. And we didn't want to come forward with an option that we could not accomplish. And so we did put the field house as the identified building, uh, and we demarcated a location for the auxiliary gym. We definitely cannot afford both. There is a possibility that we might be able to do one or the other. But it is way too early to call and the budget is tight and it will take responsible design work. Uh, in the other phases to make that happen.
Okay, and then finally.
And trustee Reckler, we're gonna do a second round, so we'll come back to you. Justine Chris, no problem. Trustee Christian, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Uh, I just want, first of all, I wanna say thank you for the presentation. On both of the schools, um. You know, this has been a long time, I guess, you know, to, to, you know, it's, it's been a long time coming. And so, but. Um, you know, this, looking at the whole, you know, project, so we have an option to choose from option, option one and, uh, or option two. And the, the community chooses that, right? Or how's that word?
So through the steering committee and through the community meetings, the community was bringing forward option two. This evening as their selected option, although the board has full discretion to choose whatever option they want this evening. Option one or option two.
And trustee Christian, just to clarify, tonight we are picking which one we're moving forward with.
Okay, got you. All right, and, um, and then also this, you know, this looking at Kennedy has a lot of land there. Uh, where on one side is, 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 is a baseball field. Next to the swim center, will that be done or, or that will be?
It is, uh, part of the, the option has a minimal addressing of the baseball field. It's not meant to be a full turf replacement. Uh, but a top dressing and redoing of the fencing and, uh, bleachers is included within the current options budget.
Okay, and, and last of all, I'm gonna, um, Mr. Paris. Is, was one of my teachers there at Kennedy, so he goes way back. And I think Mr. Don Gosney mentioned that and he's been waiting for a long time to see this happen too, so. Um, and just to say, you know, uh, will this happen? When will we get started on making this happen?
We would like to bring the architectural contracts to move forward with design coming in December. And then as we move forward, the first phase is approximately five years out for completion of construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Clark Smithfold.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for the presentation. Dr. Harris, my question is about portable education. Because we're going to have students in portables and what have we done in the process of? The learning about when students are in portables, how the education is impacted. So that's the first question I would have. Have we done learnings around that?
So we have been looking at the temporary campus and we've toured that with Ms. McGee. We're doing, uh, in intermediate. Projects to get that campus ready. One of the important things that we're doing that's going to start during Christmas break and has already been awarded to the contract. Uh, or to a contractor is removing a section of the nine hundred building to really. Improve flow, circulation and supervision. We are also in the midst of awarding. Uh, I think bids come in next week, uh, fencing changes to start addressing again the circulation and flow of a cooperating. The, um, temporary campus into the facility. I know if Ms. McGee was here tonight because she's expressed it to me several times. She is concerned about the security staff and just covering the vast size of the campus, so I would be remiss not to mention that. Uh, however, we are looking at buildings themselves and working on it. The good news about the portables, they do have air conditioning and they do have windows. So, um, there, you give and take a little bit, um, but we, we are trying to make the portable campus as best as we can. Uh, to accommodate teaching and learning.
Thank you very much for that answer. My second question has to do with the, you named it cafeteria, I think. Okay. So. What has, what thought has been around the fact that if you have the auditorium? Or the, the cafeteria and then you have the theater. And I'm asking from the perspective of Hercules, because Hercules has that same kind of model, Hercules High School. Where are the kids gonna change to get? Where's the changing room, right? So if I'm doing a play. And or a dance performance and I have to change into two outfits, where do I change? At Hercules, they change in the cafeteria because it's right next to the stage. Is that what you're thinking in this or is there some other thought behind that?
So one of the things that we talked about when we were discussing a combination space is understanding that the backstage. Components of a theaters are almost more important than the theater itself. Uh, so currently in the program, we do have things like dressing in green rooms as part of the program, um, for that space. Uh, the exact combination of how the stage would be positioned and whether it be between or on one side of the different spaces. Is not yet determined, but that's gonna have to come as we develop this plan. Um, however. Or we are taking into account the idea that backstage is very important.
If I could just add for the board's, uh, benefit to reference the appendix, as Ellen mentioned, we haven't done design work yet. But there's a concept sketch of the cafeteria in there, which shows with the seating out versus with it closed. And shows that very important backstage area, uh, that would accompany it. And as we mentioned in the presentation, it's a proper stage. But it's also proper backstage.
Thank you very much for that consideration to all aspects of VAPA. I really appreciate that. The final question I have is with the configuration that you have in option two. Where there's a clustering of type of kind of performance, like you have the gym and then you have like the cafagymatorium, right? So have we considered the fact that one's gonna be really loud? For example, plays happen in the fall, right? So does basketball. Basketball will start now in the fall and the winter time. Have we considered a game happening at the same time a play is happening and the noise and the traffic and everything that would happen if? All of those stars aligned at one time.
The, the advantage of the, the current structure of the plaza is that those are in different positions. Um, and so they're perpendicular to one another and not having a connected wall. So the sound transfer should be very minimal. Um, the parking is something that will need to be addressed, although you can see in the, um, image that I think I'm sharing. Um, there is additional space in the back that has not been defined. Parking is something that we've discussed. It's an important part with both the steering committee as well as in the master planning process of incorporating back there. We haven't quite figured out where it wants to go, but it wants to be somewhere and that would help alleviate a multiple event kind of situation.
Thank you very much, President Gonzalez-Hoy. I'm complete.
Thank you so much. Uh, trustee Caliber, trustee Cybert, do you have any questions? Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, my first one is, how are we gonna keep the staff and the students? And families involved through the next seven years of the completion of the project?
We continue to look for additional outlets to be able to go to the community. Um, we have, uh, learned. These two different communities, um, throughout the last year of this process. Um, Kennedy is a much more onsite program, so in this round of, um, processes, we were onsite. Um, and, and so we showed up for lunch, we showed up for orientation, we showed up for back to school. I, we will continue to keep doing that. We will also continue to coordinate with our school staff, especially now that our new administration is on board. To talk to them about the, um, the best ways to engage their community. I, I would like to give a shout out to their scout who has helped us coordinate, um, different things and get communications going. Um, and, and so it, it's just, we will keep doing, uh, and keep working towards more and more involvement. Uh, as we move forward, we also really appreciated when the superintendent brought pizza.
Thank you. Um. My next question is, during the rebuild, what's gonna happen to the CTA, CTA, CTE pathways? Like the welding, uh, uh, room and the fab lab, how are we gonna be able to continue those programs? In portables, is that even possible?
We have considered that and I'll let Jeff explain.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if, Louis, if we could go to the slide in the appendix, which shows the six hundred building. Uh, so and I appreciate the question and, and these are very vital programs and they're very unique spaces. And so what we've done is to find a way to renovate this building while keeping construction trades, wood shop and the welding shop going. And so if you take a look at the image there on your screen and if you can mentally picture kind of the bottom left corner is where the fab lab is now. And so what we would do is relocate that program. And then in that space, we can build additional space for the welding while still having welding be in its space. And if you remember, the welding's in the middle. Of the bottom, right? And so that space can be renovated and then once it's done, we can connect the two spaces. Similarly, wood shop is upper left, we don't have to change that space. And then in the middle is where we have construction trades, that's a very undersized space. So we can take the room in the upper right corner, renovate it and then. Over a summer, we can connect the two spaces and make a bigger space. Same kind of approach for, uh, Eagle Link. Um, we can renovate the adjacent space and then connect them.
Thank you so much. It's very helpful. Um, Ms. McGee, could you put a picture of the option two, please? Could you just point out where are the portables? Going to be or currently at, is it where Calvert Charter used to be? Are we just repurposing those portables?
Yes, it is the same set of portables. It would be repurposed.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, well, that was, you don't need to beat the picture. I appreciate it. Um, okay. Let's go to, is there anyone have any additional questions? Trusty Reckler, we'll start with you.
Thank you. This applies really for Kennedy, Richmond and Stige. So your, your, your budget is two hundred and eighty million for Kennedy and Richmond. That's the whole budget, correct? That's all your cost overruns, that's your, that is full laid in, that's all the money that's left. So would you tell me about your planning process to be able to hit two hundred and eighty million on the dime?
So within the hundred and eighty point one million, uh, you'll notice that there's a significant difference between that. And the one eighty-five, which is our hard construction cost. So our hard construction cost is really what we are anticipating for the construction budget to be. However, within the space across from that, there is a, um, level of contingency that we're holding at a district-wide level. Um, and as we know more and as these designs are built out through the phasing, we have the opportunity if, um. If the stars align and all the pieces are working together and the economy holds and we don't have crazy escalation. That we can pour more money back into the, the, into the, the projects themselves. Uh, so we do have a little bit of a, a, a teeter there. We also will have to, um. Look as we get further in the phasing and we complete phase one design and it goes into DSA, we will start phase two and three designs. That gives us an opportunity to really think hard about what two and three want to be. Um, and there may be some adjustments in those scopes, uh, as we move forward and we know more. There's also things that we don't control, such as underground utilities and soils. And I, I know that I've come before you before for change orders on those items. We are aware of that. And within this, we do have the same ten percent contingency for construction, uh, that we typically, uh, withheld. Hold so that we can, um, accommodate those things that we just can't control. Um, but all of them, we will be looking for ways to mitigate and, um. And find solutions for, and we will continue to strive to get as much out of this budget as, as we possibly can. Um, you cannot spend a year and a half at both of these school sites like I have and not feel what I feel for these campuses. I desperately want to give more. I also want to not overpromise things that I can't at this moment in time. Knowing what I know about construction and design and how it folds over time. Uh, so we're trying to be careful with what we're bringing forward tonight. We think it is feasible. Um. There hopefully may be a, a little bit more that we can give, but we can't guarantee it.
And one of the other things we're looking at is just how we deliver the project as a whole, as it is a phased project, but there are other delivery methods. Such as least leaseback, other options that we may be looking at, that'll help us along the way to help guarantee that. I can't say guarantee, but help guide us as we move forward. So we're very much aware of what the budget is, uh, where our cap is so that we can stay within budget on this project.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanna flip to the rest of the enterprise. So this will strip, my understanding, all dollars. For anything else, for any other school outside of MRAD and RRM and like little budgets. Is that accurate?
This will allocate all the allocated bond dollars out to Richmond Kennedy project. Um, there, there are some project savings that will roll back in from some of the projects that are still in our construction, but those will be very small dollars. So you are correct, the remaining dollars that would be spent on other projects would be our other funds such as RRM, our developer fees. And our capital fund.
Okay, and how far, how far will that take you? I mean, those are, I mean, you know, like.
So we do, we don't use bond dollars for projects outside of what the board has allocated out to us already. So there, i- it's not like we're building projects beyond the, the bond, um, that we don't have authority to do. So we'll continue to do what we've been doing in the past and use those dollars as, as wisely as we can. We tack the most critical projects that are in front of us. Um, our, our capital fund is, is a fund that continues to fund every year. Um, so there is. Um, our, our capital fund is, is a fund that continues to fund every year. Um, so there is revenue coming in, but it, it, it won't be the size of any bond that you would see.
Was that your last question, trustee Reckler?
I'm, I'm sorry. I cannot hear. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was asking if that was your last question.
I, I, I do have one more.
Okay.
Okay, and then can you come back and talk about measure D? From two thousand and two, there's small dollars there. It looks like, you know, maybe two thousand, twenty-five hundred. But for measure J, two thousand and five, it looks like there's still seventy-seven point five million sitting out there, if I'm correct, or in the ballpark. What is preventing those funds from being used for projects?
Currently, those dollars, we cannot access those dollars. I believe the current estimate is twenty thirty-five and as we're up against the assess valuation numbers. Uh, we're, we're hoping to bring uh, K and N to do a presentation uh, either late December or early January to talk about um, our accessibility to those dollars. And we can actually, at that point in time, he can talk more about those major J dollars and when they're accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Anyone else have any questions? You have a question, trustee Christian? Go ahead.
Uh, it's a quick question. Uh, no, uh, and we talked about Kennedy, but Stige.
We're, we're gonna do Stige later in the agenda.
Later in the agenda. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board, does anyone have a motion that would like to make? Remember, we are currently just approving the design. We're gonna approve the budget and items three and four. Um, so please make a motion if you're making one around the designs.
I move that we approve the Kennedy project option number two.
Second.
Okay. Um, then let's move to comments. If we could put up a clock. If we could do three minutes. And then is there anyone like to start with their comments? Trustee Christian, would you like to get started?
Yeah, I guess I can start. Thank you. Um, I just, just wanted to say, you know, um, we've been waiting, 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 I don't know how long. But um, as alumni of Kennedy, you know, I really want to see this, you know, come to reality. Hey, you know, uh, I just, I just hope it is, you know, don't take any, any longer than what it is right now. And I just wanted to see things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Trustee Reckler, do you have any comments?
I just want to thank everybody for all of their work on this. Feels like a century ago since this passed.
Thank you. Just Clerks and Folds, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, President Gonzalez-Hoy. I want us just to keep in mind that what twenty thirty will look like. Um, twenty thirty is seven years from now. I will be the tender age of fifty-three. My oldest will be twenty-five, my middle twenty-two, and my youngest eighteen. So it's keeping it into the focus of twenty thirty is coming, but it's, it seems far away, but it's close. And the kids that are now in TK will be in sixth grade. Those who are now in sixth grade will be twelfth graders. We want to make sure that this project stays on time. We do not want to push the project back any further and we want to make sure that when we do it, we do it correctly. We want to make sure that we are diligent with our funds. We want to make sure that we are transparent with the community and this should be an every day coming and telling us where we are and making sure that we are being accountable as a board and we're being accountable as a community to keep us on a tight schedule. Dr. Hurst, I know you and your team, we need to make sure that we're talking with the students now about what portable education will look like because they're going to have to live through it. We need to make sure that we are clear and aware of the issues that may come from our design, right? Because there will be some impact and there will be some change. I appreciate the hard work that you have done. I appreciate the community and you know, I'm looking forward to twenty thirty and cutting the ribbon on Kennedy High School. I am complete.
Thank you, Clerks and Folds. Trustee Cop, do you have any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for those who obviously worked on this and um, as a student, um, just seeing that of how like the project is, is changing and how students will um, definitely be, be in a better academic environment um, compared to what it is right now. I'm really excited to see um, the change move forward as time goes on. And yeah, I'm like, um, pretty excited that this plan is finally moving forward.
Thank you. Trustee Cypress, do you have comments?
Um, I also would like to start off by saying thank you to everyone who worked on this project. It is a huge step for our district and all the students within it as well. Um, as someone who does have friends at um, Richmond High School, they do tell me about how hard it is, like the environment with no windows. It can be very like, just demotivating sometimes to not be able to, you know, receive outside natural light. Um, so I think in a more open learning environment, it would be, it would be great. And I looked at the diagrams and I think the architectural designs are really great and the different um, placement of each academy is really interesting to me. And then go add more focus on the academies in general. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, for my comments, I, I want to start by thanking everybody who's been involved so far uh, for the last couple of decades, not just through this process. Um, uh, I want to thank our facilities team. And then I also want to apologize to the Kennedy and really Richmond High community. Even though none of us up here were here when the decisions were made that were made. I understand the inequity that has been created in our district um, and the issues that it has created. Um, and to be honest, whether or not families are sending students to Richmond High and Kennedy. Um, and I wish we could do fully reveals. I, I've lost a lot of sleep. I'm sure many people here have about what we can afford, but as you are hearing tonight, the current board is prioritizing and staff every dollar that we have into our last two high schools and Stige. Um, because it is difficult to sometimes walk into these three schools and not feel terrible for the learning environment of our students who are, to be clear, mostly brown and black. Um, and um, I don't want to get emotional, but I, I am really happy and proud that we are finally moving forward. And even though it might take seven years and um, many of us might be gone, I think everybody is going to leave a better place in West Contra Costa by doing this. Um, so I, I'm really excited that we're finally doing this. I asked staff, which I already know that staff feels this way, but that we keep everybody involved um, in the process as we learn that if we have a new dollar, that it comes back to the board so that we can decide how to invest it into these two schools that deserve more than what we can give them now. Um, and, and Stige as well. Um, and um, yeah, I just want to, I just want to thank everyone for the work that's to come. Um, and I just want to give a shout out to the Stige, Richmond High and Kennedy staff because one of the things that I do love about going to these schools is that they have, they have made the most with pennies. They have made the most with the facilities that they have. Um, and they deserve a lot of recognition for the work that they have done. So thank you. And without further ado, why don't we move to the vote? Uh, we'll start with trustee Cypress, sir.
Cypress, sir, yes.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Passed unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna move to Richmond High School. If we can pull up the presentation, Mr. Freeze and Ms. Mejia will pass it to you.
Good evening. Uh, moving on to Richmond High, uh, we have tonight with us DLR Group and their lead is Jesse Miller. And if you'll come forward with your um, team, we can move on to uh, Richmond. And again, this is reviewing the scope and the budget allocations come after uh, this presentation as the next action items. Take it away.
Thank you, uh, members of the board. We're excited to show you what the last five months have been at Richmond High School. Uh, my name is Jesse Miller, as Ellen said, uh, K-12 Education Leader for DLR Group. Uh, presenting with me today, who you'll meet in a second, is Ms. Kishika McKinney. Um, she's from RSS Consulting, an equity-based planning firm. Um, this team was specifically choja, chosen for this project based on our extensive experience in high school transformation projects that Richmond is going to be. Um, what follows is a quick overview, very quick, as you sat through the other one, of where we've been the last four, five months, what we've learned and what we've heard, more importantly, and what we've gained that's going to propel us into the next part of this project. So, Kishika?
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Kishika McKinney and I am the Senior Community Engagement Leader with RSS Consulting. And it's truly a pleasure to stand before you this evening. Um, and I do so with a lot of pride and excitement. Um, and to share with you the engagement process that we've conducted over the last five months and the work with the Richmond High School community. And to put it succinctly, this community showed up and showed out. And by conducting an extensive, community-driven process, this team has engaged educators, teachers, students, parents, caregivers and community members to ensure that the many voices were heard and included. And we went into this with a equity design approach. And that included first listening, uncovering underlying conditions, designing community, designing strategies with the community, and then making decisions with the community. And on this slide, you'll see in practice, you'll see pictures of the student, the meetings with students, the listening sessions, the community meetings and the steering committee meetings. And who participated in these sessions? We met with community partners, current and future students, caregivers, families, teachers, staff, and we had over one thousand touchpoints in this community in going through this process. And here's what we learned. We narrowed it down to five design priorities, which I'll share in the next slide. Identified twenty-five underlying conditions, thirty-seven design strategies, and then we got down to the two options that you're going to hear about tonight. And those design priorities are one, safe, healthy and well-built, physical, emotional and identity safety, optimal spaces for learning, synergy with staff, families, community, and an equitable investment and access. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jesse to walk you through the options.
Thank you, Kishika. I'd be remiss if we didn't lead off this section with a quote from the great Maya Angelou, who said, "You real, you can't really know where you're going until you know where you've been." This slide really shows you in, in context what Richmond High School's currently state of affairs is. As we've done our assessments on the existing facilities, many of the main buildings are in very um, leaning towards the poor uh, side of this house, including the theater extremely poor from a structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing assessments. Um, there are some bright spots, as we know, the stadium, the new auxiliary gymnasium, but overall, there's a lot of, of, you know, we all are familiar with the mall building, the lack of daylight, the lack of um, the deficiencies of the HVAC. They've talked about it, some of the community meetings. Um, but what, what we heard from our listening sessions was about how we could, you know, people had concerns about how can we renovate this mall building. So as we go to the next slide, what we wanted to show you is that the structural system of that really large big complex at Richmond High School is actually broken into seven distinct structural systems. Where we can take to our benefit the pieces off in those boxes without infecting the structural integrity of the remaining structure. So this will help us as, as Ms. Hooper talked about, um, when we talk about the phasing and moving kids from one section to other, we can actually take pieces of the building off at a time. So when we look at the design options and, and know we're going to go through this really quick, um, the biggest takeaway here is that given the current bu, budgets for the project, um, there'll be a need and a mix of new construction and modernization. Um, but what I really like about this slide is it does show you that we are trying to maximize every single one of your taxpayer dollars and touch as much of Richmond campus site as possible. So you'll see play fields, you'll see site perimeter fencing, parking, um, and really try to touch all those spaces. As we go to the more in-depth, um, next slide of the option, option one, which we call the promenade scheme, removes a large portion of the one-story mall building uh, to make room for a new drop-off and parking lot uh, along Twenty-third Street. Um, it really brings a new front of camp, campus, uh, creating a large two-story building that elongates the facade um, along Twenty-third Street. Um, this option also demolished the existing gymnasium locker rooms and band room and provided new construction of a new gym lobby, um, storage, support space and locker areas. And again, this option, just like the other one, will result in new play courts, tennis courts, uh, field upgrades for both the softball and baseball fields. Oop, I think we're, the slide's not clicking. No? Okay. Sorry, I missed it. Sorry about that. Um, so option two, which we call the outdoor plaza scheme, continues the same thing, the mix of the new construction and major minor modernization of the existing facilities, but in a uniquely different way than option one. Again, the key takeaway on this slide is again, the amount of Richmond High School that we are trying to transform. As we go to the next slide, you can see it more in detail. This option removes the existing mall space and library completely and replaces it with a large outdoor quad area um, that will allow for natural daylighting to reach ninety-five percent of the new classrooms, right? What a change that would be from the existing Richmond High School. Um, we're also looking at tearing down the large classroom bank that's closest to the Twenty-third Street um, of that existing main building to make way for a new two-story addition that will house administration, library, the academies, and most importantly, the health center will be, be brought in from across the parking lot into a private location within the building. Uh, this scheme builds a new art and music wing in front of the existing theater to once again reimagine and transform the users', user experience and arrival sequence. This is probably the most important slide of our entire presentation, so I'd, I, I would ask the board and everyone to take a deep look at this. Because what this slide does, it compares both options, but what is important about it is both projects, as Ms. Super said, uh, talked about earlier, both options are on budget. And the items on the left-hand column are the design priorities that uh, Ms. McKinney talked about earlier that we heard from the community. The next column over is how both options solve these priorities. So again, both options solve each of the main five design priorities that we heard from the community, the staff and the students. The next column over is the unique uh, strategies that option one, the promenade scheme provides. And the final column is the unique options uh, and strategies that the outdoor plaza provides. The op, option one promenade has the new drop-off and parking sequence, um, and activated mall space um, for indoor events. And most importantly, as uh, one of the board members pointed out, that option one kind of has uh, the way that is designed in phasing, no interim housing required, right? Um, option two, though, ninety-five percent of the classrooms having daylight. That'd be tremendous, right? Um, direct access to large outdoor dining, large spaces for outdoor areas. So as we move on, um, we, through our thorough So as we move on, we, through our thorough engagement process with the steering committee, with the community, with the students, utilizing fun exercises, activities, worksheets, and dialogue to really understand which one reflects and captures the opinion of the Richmond community. Based on the results, three out of the 22 community members and five of the 11 steering members voted on option one. 19 of the 22 community members and eight of this 11 steering members voted on option two as best reflecting their needs. With that being said, I'll hand it over to Ellen.
All right, so our staff recommendation is to move forward with option two. However, in the last steering committee in particular, there was much discussion about some of the advantages of the promenade scheme, primarily about the interim housing and the drop-off sequence that could be achieved. So we would like to ask for some flexibility as we move forward into design to see if we can have an opportunity to implement that. The outdoor plaza and taking and removing the entirety of the mall was definitely a huge advantage that was expressed at that meeting. And so that component, we don't anticipate adjusting. However, we would like the ability to move forward with option two, but continue to explore how we can leverage our funding towards permanent construction versus interim.
Ms. McKinney, would you mind repeating the flexibility that you're asking for? Sorry, I was, I couldn't hear very well.
Of course. So part of the reason why the interim housing is required on this option, or actually why not part, is that the new construction occurs in the same location that the current building is in. And so as we move forward into design, the placement on how far north or south that two-story building wants to land on this site, we would like to continue to explore that to see if there's a way that we can shift it a bit and maintain some of the existing building during construction to minimize the amount of modernization we need to do. That might also allow us to provide a new drop-off that's not the current location where it is today. And so those two components, we would like to keep exploring in our schematic design and conceptual design. However, the core of what option two is, which is removing that center space of the building, is something that we would maintain as we move through.
Thank you.
And then we have one more slide and also the staff.
So last slide, in the broad schedule, we're kind of currently here, November 8th today, right? We're asking for the board approval to move this project to the next phase of designing construction. Provided that happens tonight, we're looking at a schedule that begins in Ernst with the goal of getting kids in the new facilities as quickly as possible, as you guys have expressed. As of right now, this, both Richmond schemes anticipate three different phases of construction happening with the first, hopefully, as Ms. Hooper said, being in 2027, 2028, 2020 school year, right? This has been an amazing five months of fast facility and then getting to know and be a part of the rich tradition and history that is Richmond High School. DLR Group, RSS, looks forward to what happens next.
And you've had an opportunity to meet both Jesse and me, but it was very important that we had a team that reflected the racial and cultural identity at Richmond High School. And I would just like to quickly ask the DLR Group representatives and the RSSC team to please stand. Thank you, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
And at this point in time, we would like to bring up the representatives from the steering committee, who similarly to Kennedy, will share their experience in this process.
Hello. So, nice to speak to you again. I'm going to kick this off. First, I want to thank our architectural group. So I just had a kid. He's two months old, so I missed five weeks of school, so I missed a lot of these meetings. These architects went out of their way. I'm also very fussy and very strong advocate for our school and for my students' needs. And they went out of their way to schedule a meeting with me one-on-one to discuss my needs, since I'd missed so many meetings. And I've never felt so heard in my time working in this district and working with these architects. So huge shout out to them for being thorough, diligent, considerate, and honest. It's really nice. So again, just sort of picking up where I left off with my other comment, because we thought this was going to work a little different, equity. In my 10 years working at Richmond High School, I'm now in the oldest secondary building in this district. It was built in 1953, when the previous music building from the original building was condemned. I love my building, it's nice, but as old as wore out, I've had not a heater for three weeks now. And that's not, facilities is on it. They're doing a good job. They're waiting on a part to come, and I'm very grateful. But old things wear out, and this building has worn out. When you go to, when you go to a Richmond High, a Kennedy High, a Verdi, a Perry's, a Helms, as you just talked about, you could feel the trauma there. And as institutions and structures, it's like one of the few things we can really do to try to combat that that'll last over time as teachers come, teachers go, boards come, boards go. So I think it's very important, and just to frame our vote, or your vote, this, these are partial rebuilds. This is a school of 1,400. You could look at the numbers. We had some great statistics earlier from one of my colleagues at Kennedy. You could look at the different sizes of both of these schools and do the math for yourselves about those percentages and the amount of students affected by these buildings. That's all I have to say about that, but it should be considered. It's urgent that we get this done. We gotta get it done. It's, time keeps moving. And what we learned from the previous experience with our first run-through of this, when suddenly everything inflated like crazy, we just gotta get it done because it's already costing us. We're already, we've already lost money on these projects because we're doing it again. And I just, before I hand this off, I just want to say, look at the other schools, we're still getting part of it. One of my points when we came back to this project again was, are we doing, is this it? Is this the period? Or is this a partial rebuild and in the future, we'll advocate to continue to build our schools? Because I know what's probably going to happen in this community that I've lived in for 35 years. As soon as we get partial rebuild, everyone else is like, they got a new school, they're good. But it's still a part, and I think it's important we emphasize that. We have people thinking we got a new school, when we got an aux gym, that that aux gym got smaller and smaller and smaller as Pinole Valley High School went over and over and over budget from that same bond. That affects our kids and it affects our everything, so. Just equity, man. And I'm going to hand it over to one of these lovely ladies.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Before we move to you, if I can take a few minutes for something. Board, it is 7:05, so we do have to extend the meeting, because we're supposed to end by seven. So I'm going to make a motion that we extend until we finish our items. If that's okay. Hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later, but I just want to make sure we don't have to do this again. So just that we, oh, actually, we need an end time. Sorry, thank you. I keep forgetting that. I'll make a motion that we extend till 8:30. And hopefully, we don't have to get to that point. But just so we have enough time for the other, and we're finishing the second item, but we have three more items after this.
Smith, full seconds.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the vote. Trustee Cypress.
Cypress, yes.
Jesse Calb.
Calib, yes.
Clark Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass you and I'm going to say, thank you. Ms. Reyes, you can, or Salon, you're welcome to start.
Well, I would like to say, my name is Alon Harrison, and I would like to say this, I've been a part of a couple of rebuilds. And I have stopped some rebuilds too. And the reason they were stopped because it wasn't inclusion. A lot of the times, you get architects and companies who don't include the whole community and don't make sure that our children, we're here. A lot of them get hired to come here and do work and they leave. So it's not always considered about how the people who are going to be utilizing these buildings, how that effect is going to come out on them. One thing I like about the people who were chosen to do Richmond High, they partnered with someone else, is the RSSC. Those people made sure that all parents were included, all community people were included. So if you guys are considering, when you look at the other rebuilds, if the architect doesn't have that component, I'm not sure that's the best one for our district because that's the component that makes it count. That's the component that matters. That's the component that adds equity into when we're talking about rebuilds and how the community is going to utilize this building that belongs to them in the future for their future grandchildren and those things. The people we are paying to do this work are not going to stay here all the time and benefit or not benefit from it. So please, when you guys are considering things, check the box that they included everyone. And I'm glad that I was able to stop Lake's rebuild until they included everyone. And I will continue to advocate for everybody to be involved. And when they say, "Oh, we tried," that's not good enough. Put your money where the problem is and you'll find solutions. So I like the solution that Richmond High did, and I like the turnout, and I like how I know that even if I don't get to put my hand in the cement over there, that I had some input on how that building is going to look for my children and my grandchildren. Because I got 17 of them, so I don't know, Dr. Hurst, how many I'm going to put through here. And so y'all will be here a while, and thank you all for really, I don't know who picked the people, but thank you for Richmond High and what you all did in being considerate and including everyone. I'm complete thank.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. And good evening, everyone. I also just want to elevate what Ms. Harrison was saying. This was such a positive experience for our Richmond High community. Equity was at the center of every conversation and every decision that was made. And I think that is extremely important to highlight and elevate, that this process, the constant reminder that equity is what we're doing here. Every gathering that we had included students, included community members, included parents, included staff members and alumni, including myself, at all of these meetings. Every conversation wasn't just, what do you want, but really was grounded in core values. Every single conversation, we started with core values and data. All the data from student surveys and family surveys, and as you saw, we had over 1,000 participants giving us input. And that's really what drove the conversations. But I think what was really special about the whole process were the stories that were told. So many people really shared their own stories. Tears were, you know, came about in their personal lives when they're sharing that, their priorities, their vision for the Richmond High community, for the future children who are going to have this new building. And I think in all of that, what we found was that our priorities were best seen. These were the two options that we wanted to bring today, but our priorities from the steering committee really leaned towards option number two.
And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Okay, board, now we're going to move to questions. Does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to move us quickly. If you don't raise your hand, you're going to be, okay. Yes? Trustee Christian, go ahead. You get to start.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I was going to ask this, I should have asked this question in the beginning, but have we involved the city, like City of Richmond, like the mayor and city manager, to be part of this process too?
There were invitations extended when we had both the community surveys as well as the community meetings to the staff at the, at both county and city.
So the county and the city, okay. And, okay, and the next question I have is, with the rebuild of Richmond High, the portables, where would the portables go for those students of that school until everything is completed?
So that's the, that's obviously a challenge, right? And you heard option one provided no need for the portables, right? So the, the staff recommendation is how can we figure out the option two, which is the preferred option by the community, without having interim housing? So that we can maximize every single dollar of your taxpayer money into the permanent facilities, not temporary. So right now, that's the charge in the next phase that we hope to solve by not having to do that. If we do have to extend it, we've looked at solutions. There's currently a row of portables out at Richmond along the backside of the gymnasium. So there's space there. It's not the ideal space because, again, students and their commute times from the main building to the portable location. So we will look at that. We design interim housing appropriately because if we do have to put interim housing down, which we're hoping not to, we understand that that could be there in a project like this for an entire kids' high school experience.
Okay, thank you. That's all the question I have.
Thank you, Trustee Christian. Clark Smith Folds.
I think you answered my question about the portables, because I had the question about the portables also. But I also have a question about, because he sparked a question in me. When we're talking about portables and their placements on both campuses, how flexible are we now with the timing of in-between classes? Right? Usually get five minutes between classes. How are we taking that type of scheduling into consideration when we place these portables or move these portables around? How flexible are we with our admin about looking at times and, and things that go into consideration?
We'll continue to look into that with, obviously, admin as well as the bargaining units to keep that in mind.
Thank, thank you. My second question is, because we're 10 years out, seven, seven to 10 years out, how deep have we talked to the feeder schools? Because the students that are currently there will not enjoy this, the end result. They will be during the process. They are planting the seeds, but they won't reap the harvest. How much have we reached out to those kids and those parents and those community members who will end up reaping the harvest of the seven years out or the 10 years out?
Every communication that we send out, we send out not only to the school, but every feeder school going into it. As, as I stated in the presentation, we had over 5,000 views on each one of those communications, barring up to the one that I just put up tonight, which we were at 3,700. So we fell off a little bit, but we'll keep working on that. But they did receive all of the communications to be involved. We will, as we get further into, right now, it's super hard for feeder pattern to be involved in the process because we are so high-level and kind of mythical in the, in the process. But when we start getting down to things that it's much more on the ground and you can kind of see what choices we're making, I think there'll be opportunities for us to especially hit the middle school spaces and have conversations with those students about their priorities.
Thank you for that. My third and final question is, Dr. Hurst, how flexible are our architects? Because no one is a soothsayer, right? No one knows the future. No one knows what's going to happen. We may, I don't know, food may fly to you. I don't know. But how flexible are we with our design to where we can meet the needs of a future that we don't know exists?
Well, the joy of being a master planner, which I was for 15 years, is that you live 20 years in the future always. You're either five years behind or 20 years too early. So we will continue to strive. I know there's been conversations with both architectural firms about different exercises and workshops we can do with teachers to kind of help them expand thinking about what teaching and learning could be in the future versus just where they are right now. So that is something we work hard to allow that space for that imagining. The other thing that we have to do is, even if we knew exactly what was happening in 20 years, these buildings, as we see, last for longer than one round of teachers, one round of administration, one round of facility people. So we continue to look for opportunities to create flexible, usable, multi-use kind of spaces so they can adapt and adjust over time as well. So we will be looking at that, especially in our CTE spaces, because we know industry- because we know industry changes just as much as staff and priorities do. And so we have to be flexible and um and really try as best we can to future-proof things.
Thank you very much. The rest are just comments. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, I was wondering if I could have the architects back up. I apologize. I forgot your names. Please remind me as you come up. Mister?
Mister Reeler.
Anyway, thank you. Um, I'm still confused about the temporary housing. Could you re-explain that to me? Um, so I I had trouble envisioning for like moving fourteen hundred students, right? So um in option two, um, could you? Maybe we could put up a map and you can show me specifically kind of what the vision is.
Maybe, Ms. Cooper, if you could go to the structural slide that shows the seven wings. So when we talk about Richmond High School and moving kids around, what we're really looking at is this. There, the 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 light blue to the left is your primary classroom wing at Richmond High School. There's a lot of of general classrooms there. So when we strategically phase this campus, the goal is to take off the zones that are not uh heavy with uh student classrooms, modernized spaces there to get those classrooms ready and inhabited, and then you move the moves around, right? Um, so there'd be quite a bit of of moving uh in option two, but that that's again, the goal is so that we don't. That big bank of the light blue classrooms has over thirty classrooms in it. And so the goal is to always have that still be there until the very end because that way kids are at least in the permanent housing and not in temporary housing. Does that answer your question a little bit?
Yes, it does. But how does the central mall come in place? Because that's one ceiling, right?
So it's, it is. So it's.
Um, the public cannot hear us again on Zoom. Are they, can they hear us now?
You want me to say something?
Okay, now now they can hear us. Could you, could we restart? Oh.
That's okay. I can go from here. That's good. Um, again, I wanna say thank you. Uh, thank, and I want us to be very aware of. I heard a story when Richmond was built, it had no windows because we were in war or whatever, right? So, because they didn't want to have windows and get bombed out. Now we're rebuilding a school, but I wanna make sure that we're understanding that there are environmental issues now. There's smoke. There's still a need for green space. There's still high pollutants in the air. So when we're designing all of this for twenty years and thirty years for it to stay, that we have to be those innovators in taking what we know now and thinking that, oh, my gosh, it could get worse, and how are we being our highest level of flexibility? Because we have to be able to pivot. We have to be able to pivot on the dime, and that's what we've seen so much in twenty twenty. When we came back to school, it was like, hey, keep your windows open. It'd help. Well, Richmond didn't have any windows. So it became a barrier. If in ten years something happened and it says, hey, everything has to be inside, but you have nothing but outdoor space, what are we gonna do? Right? So being able to pivot, I think, is important. But I really appreciate the fact that you guys have been so diligent with your work when it comes to this particular high school. And so thank you very much. I'm complete.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Calip, trustee Cypress, do you have any comments? And I don't either. So we can move straight to the vote. We'll start with trustee Cypress.
Cypress, yes.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to the increase of the budget so that we can actually make this happen. Um, this should be probably a little quicker. Um, so we're gonna start with the increase of measure R budget for Kennedy High School.
Yes, tonight, we're asking the board to approve um the budget augmentation for Richmond High School. Staff recommends allocating remaining measure R allocation for Kennedy High School and Richmond modernization. Staff recommends increasing the increase the one million dollar budget by two hundred and seventy-nine million, one hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and eighty million, one hundred thousand dollars for Richmond High Modernization.
Thank you. Probably biggest increase we'll probably see through the project, hopefully. Um, okay, uh, board, do we have any questions about the budget specifically? Any questions? Okay, let's move to a motion. Would anyone like to make the motion to increase the budget by two hundred and seventy-nine million point one? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I move that we increase the budget for Kennedy High School to two hundred and eighty million, one hundred thousand dollars.
We're increasing it by two hundred and seventy-nine, one million dollars for a total of two hundred and eighty point one million dollars.
You're killing me, Mr. Freeze. I hope that I uh I motion that we increase the Kennedy High School project by two hundred and seventy-nine million point one.
Point one.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments? Trustee Reckler?
My comments, and it's for all of the increases in the budget, is just that there are gonna be some really lean years. I mean, for the next probably twelve to fifteen years, it's gonna be really lean. So there will be no critical needs, you know, very few. Um, you know, it's, there's gonna be maintenance, but, you know, outside of like whatever like, um, you know, the smaller budgets can afford, that's gonna be it. So that's pretty scary, honestly. Um, and um, I mean, the messaging needs to go out now that, you know, there's, there isn't, there isn't gonna be money. So, um. It just with the the things, the way, you know, how much things cost, um. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's concerning. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, okay, trustee, clerk Smith Folds?
I just want us to be very diligent. You can use any kind of metaphor you want, white on rice, dog with a bone, whatever it is. We're paying for this, and they need to meet the timelines that we set. They need to meet what we ask them to do. We have to be very, very um. We need to know who's in the driver's seat. And we're in the driver's seat, and we need to spend all two hundred and eighty million, one hundred thousand dollars to the best of our capability and not have to go back and reap. Measure twice, cut once. That's what I really want this, these projects to be. Measure twice, cut once, stick to the timeline. I'm complete.
Thank you. For my comments, I think that inheriting the Pinot Valley project has been a huge learning experience for me. And I think that we went way over budget for that school, and we are still experiencing issues, right? So I just challenge us to learn from that experience as we build these two schools or rebuild partially. Um, because it's not like we have more budget to come back to, right? To ask for more, to ask for change orders or whatever, right? Like, we're building a little wiggle room, but to trustee Reckler, we don't have anymore. We are prioritizing these three schools, and that's it, right? So we have to be really thoughtful and 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 focused, right, in these schools? So I think that we have the right staff for that. Sounds like we have the right architects, right? But I think that we really do have to be really watchful on every dollar and how it's being spent. Um, and hopefully, the state will provide us with more so that we can invest more in these projects and the other schools because the reality is that we also have other schools that are falling apart, right? So so we do have to be thoughtful of that, but these schools absolutely deserve it and need it, right? So um, again, I'm proud that we're doing this, and um I challenge us to be really smart with every dollar. Um, okay, let's move to our vote. We'll start with trustee Cypress.
Cypress, yes.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes, pass unanimously. Thank you. We can go to the next one.
All right, so uh item D four, increase the measure R budget for Richmond High School Modernization Project. Again, we're asking the board to approve the Richmond High Modernization Budget of two hundred and seventy-nine point one million dollars. Uh, the funding source for this is measure R, increasing the total budget to two hundred and eighty point one million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Board, anyone has any questions? Okay, does anyone have a motion?
I move that we increase the Richmond High School budget by two hundred and seventy-nine point one million dollars. Oh, yeah, two hundred and seventy-nine million point one, right? Okay.
Second.
Great. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, let's move straight to the vote. Trustee Cypress?
Cypress, yes.
Trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes as well, pass unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move to our last item, which is Stige Elementary School.
Yeah, so item D five, increase the Stige Elementary School Critical Needs Project Budget. Staff recommends increasing the Stige Elementary Critical Needs Project Budget by forty point one million dollars. The funding source for the project budget increase will be state facility funds. The approval of the project budget will fund the modernization for Stige Elementary School. Tonight, we're recommending increase the Stige Elementary School project budget by two, uh, I'm sorry. Increase the Stige Critical Needs Project Budget of two point nine million dollars by forty point one million dollars to approve the, to be forty point, forty-three million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Um, and just to add very quick context with Dr. Hurst's board, um, tonight, we were potentially gonna see some options to vote on, but they were taken back because as Mahiyan, who at the beginning of the meeting, talked about, those options were portables, which Dr. Hurst, facility staff, and myself and clerk Smith Folds felt that it was not what the community of Stige was asking for. Um, and therefore, why we didn't bring those options forward, and we're just asking for the increase in the budget. But to be clear, the portables were about twenty-eight million. So increasing it to forty-three is not going to look like uh some of our rebuilt schools, because we would need about sixty-five to seventy million in order to rebuild Stige to the level of some other schools. But why Dr. Hurst wanted to add more to this was so that it wouldn't just be portables. It could be a larger design. Um, but again, this does add everything we have to Stige when it comes to what's left from our previous bonds, except for measure J that we talked about. Uh, but as well as, you know, from what we've gotten from the state. So I just wanted to clarify that because there were questions about the designs that were gonna be brought forward, which we decided not to. Mr. Freeze, sir, Dr. Hurst, anything you'd like to add?
I, I'm gonna take it. I think you addressed that pretty clearly. So yes, we had originally looked at options with our architect. Uh, we we established a budget around twenty million dollars, which in total all in was around twenty-eight million dollars. It was quickly recognized that twenty million, twenty-eight million dollars, it was a portable campus, limited improvements to existing multipurpose building. Um, we went back and looked what we had remaining in our state facilities funds and felt it would be best to invest what we have to meet the need for Stige Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Do we have questions, board? Trustee Reckler, and then we'll go to trustee Christian.
I I do have questions. So what do you get for forty million dollars? Are there windows going to open? Or is there no longer gonna be that hole in the flooring for the, in the teacher lounge? Is that, so what what does forty million buy? Um, if if I may, and will there needs be met?
So when we were looking at twenty-eight million, we would be able to either take down building C and or the building B, which is the office building and has the teacher's lounge in it, and do some level of modernization to the existing building C, the NPR, and add a few uh additional uh either modulators or portables or to basically replace all the buildings except for the multipurpose with regular portables. Now, adding additional money to that, we, while we have not done the analysis um of what that will look like yet, we do plan on coming back to the board to show you what that can look like. Um, when we are able to develop that with the Stige community. However, I do caution, and and you did state it earlier, but I wanna make sure it's very clear that we are going to have to make choices on this campus too. And we are gonna continue to have to make choices at Kennedy and Richmond as I stay on time and on budget. Uh, and so there are going to be people who are um disappointed potentially with the scale and scope of what we can accomplish, but it is going to be a transformational design for that overall campus. I just cautioned to say that um we will end up having to make some choices about whether we either replace the multipurpose room, whether we look at a different type of construction and for the classrooms, how much of the library and and office we build. Um, so those are the things that we will continue to look at as we develop the options, and we will be back to you before we move forward into design to show you what that looks like.
Do you have any more questions, trustee Reckler?
No, I I think I think that's it for right now.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes, I just have two questions. Um. The the layout of the um of the con, well, the asphalt that the students play on, will they have grass, you know, things they can enjoy? Because they can't go across the street to the park and play um of safety wise, but they need some life on that asphalt.
One of the things that we talked with the school side about, uh, and that was made quite clear is one of the deficiencies of the site is that the current playground really is not zoned, right? It's just one giant sea of asphalt that has no demarcation or use definition, uh, which really makes it a challenge for students who like the boundaries, right? There's a reason the line on the floor is drawn uh to keep everybody moving in the right direction. Well, that's the same for playgrounds. Playgrounds that are well-designed have different functional use spaces that are established within that space. And one of those being a a green space is what we would like to move forward with um and and could do within this project. We would. We would probably caution against grass, though, on this project, because it is a small footprint school. And our natural grass just can't hold up to the wear and tear of the usage that comes with a school site this size. Um, so it may not be natural grass, but we would be looking at some level of turf space on the campus.
Okay, and that would be very similar to what we've done at the Michelle Obama campus and eventually what you'll have at the Lake Campus.
All right, thank you on that one. And um, and Siege is a World War II school, right? Have we looked to see if we can get any funding, other funding to add to that? By Siege being a World War II school, because I know Nesham was a World War II school. I mean, have we checked with our congressman? Um, state senators, uh, representatives?
So the the state funding that is funding this project was reimbursement for modernization funds. There are specific requirements that you have to have to be able to be eligible for that funding stream. Uh, and there is some eligibility at Siege. It's not going to be a monumental amount or earth-shattering amount because that amount is based on how much we've spent on the campus, but also how many students are enrolled on the campus. Uh, and so it it is uh, something that we can definitely apply for and will apply for every time we are eligible for any state funding. Uh, we we apply, uh, which we are gonna turn in our applications for Lake and Hercules very shortly. Um, but we have done a really great job of going after state funds. So great of a job, but there's really not a lot of eligibility left within the district.
Okay, thank you. That's all right.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions. So does anyone have any motions?
I motion that we increase the Siege budget by forty point one million dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments? Clark Smith Folds?
This is a second chance, right? This is a second chance to do it the way that we want it to be done. We have a budget. We go to the community. We say this is what we can do for this budget. We come to the board. We go back to the community. We have a real good through line of communication, including all of those. Now we're doing an elementary school, so we need to look at those daycares around and say, hey, we need you at the table to be involved in this because your kids are gonna be the ones that actually enjoy this. Um, President Gonzalez, so inside of this comment is a question. We didn't have a timeline for this. Is this twenty thirty-two? Uh, is it twenty thirty also, or is it different timeline?
It'll depend on the phasing, but inevitably it will be somewhere close to that.
Around there. Okay, thank you. So again, thank you so much for um, making sure that Siege is part of these projects, because they are a part of the ones that the board has named, and I'm looking forward to seeing the new Siege. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clark Smith Folds. Trusty Reckler?
Actually, I'd like to put another motion on the floor, which is to increase the Siege Critical Needs Project Budget to forty point one million with a return of the plan to the board by what date?
It it would have to be the spring of twenty twenty-four. At this current time, we'd have to increase the architectural uh, contract for them to move forward with the additional design work. So we need to bring that back for the board to approve that. And then we can begin to working on the design and it will be early spring before we can come back to you with options.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So it would have to come back in spring twenty twenty-four automatically, or should that be in the motion?
We would love to bring it back to you as soon as that planning is completed, and it's the number one priority along with Richmond and Kennedy for us to move that forward. Uh, we can certainly give you an update as soon as we have uh, the architect on board to give you a much solid date uh, when that can occur, but we will get it on the board calendar.
And when do you think that would be? Sooner than spring twenty twenty-four?
Ellen is indicating March or April for the overall design to bring that back to you.
Okay, what if I do this, increase the increase the um, Critical Needs Project Budget by forty point one million uh, with a return to the board uh, no later than May one, twenty twenty-four?
We can do that.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, board, so we're voting on the second motion first, uh, the one that trustee Reckler just made. Okay, uh, trustee Cypress, we'll start with you.
Cypress, sir, yes.
Trusty Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clark Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Christian, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much for everybody who tuned in or here at Dejean. Our next board meeting is next Wednesday, uh, November fifteenth here at Dejean Middle School at six thirty P M. Thank you so much to everybody. I adjourn us at seven forty-two P M.